Okay, ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I feel the need to start with a moment of silence for Coach Pete Similes out of respect and as a thank you to him and the family for everything that guy did for our students and the kids in this town. He was a coach, staff member, and will be very sorely missed. So if I can ask for a moment, please. Thank you. Anyone here for public participation? Any sign up for public participation?
Just those five signed up.
Just those five?
I'm just going first.
We're gonna hear from them later. You may speak. It might be your last sign, but you may speak. Okay, hearing none, I'm moving on quickly. Report of the chairman, I wanted to ask the board, as of right now, Joe and I spoke, we don't believe we have agenda items for an August 21 meeting. It is our custom to cancel that meeting, so is everybody okay with that? If something comes up, we can always have a special meeting.
No, I'd rather.
You'd rather sit here?
Yeah, we'd rather hang out with you.
Can we in fact add another one?
You will be the acting chair.
Can we have two? We have the first and the third in August?
Just the 21st.
I think he's saying Jerry doesn't adjourn.
Just the 21st, we typically cancel.
Should be the only meeting.
I have something on the 7th, is that not true?
That's not true.
Or do I just have like a rotating thing on my calendar?
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, because you think it's the first and the third Monday of every month, but in July and August it's different.
So nothing in August.
July and August is one, yep. So is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Breaking your hearts?
I was just kidding, yeah.
Okay, so the next meeting then will be September 5th and we'll get into our normal schedule with the school year going, okay. That is all I have. I want to talk consent agenda. Now we will move on. Approval of the minutes. The minutes of our special meeting on July 5th. I gave Diane the motion that was read. I'd like to add that into those minutes because I think that's important. It's the actual motion with who we actually invited into the meeting with us. If everybody's okay with that. Any other comments on the minutes from either June 5th or July 5th? No? Any comments or questions on the warrants and wires? We are gonna be discussing budget a lot tonight and later, but anything on that right now? Everybody looks at Dennis, no? Okay?
Couldn't open it.
Joe, notification of new hires.
Yep, we're still plugging along. Like I said, I will invite all of these folks to our first meeting in September, where you get to meet them all. But we are in pretty good shape, I think. For teachers, I think the only new hire we have left is a 4th grade teacher at Monroe Elementary. I think we're...
E.I.O.
For teachers.
It's in process.
And then we have the instructional leader that Alex is meeting on that committee now. Yep.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis seconded by. Jeff, thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. We're moving on to reports of the committees. Anyone have any committee reports? I know it's been kind of slow. No? Moving right to the report of the superintendent, Joe.
Got it. First one's just a quick announcement. We have administrator negotiations start. I think it's actually a month from tomorrow, so I'll put something in the week in review, soliciting if somebody wants to sit on that committee. So like I said, we'll probably sit down with them right before school starts to start those negotiations. And I will put something out to the chair. Per statute, send something to Mike Mangels as well, make sure he knows in case they want to have someone on the committee as well.
You need probably one board member for that one? One or two?
One, one or two for us, yeah. I'm sure it's fine. I just wanted, this was a really busy legislative session, and I just wanted to give a couple of quick... There's a whole bunch of educational pieces of legislation that came out. I'm just gonna highlight three quick ones here today because they kind of impact us right away. There's a lot, I'm actually sitting in on a session with CAPS in a couple of weeks to go over some of the other pieces of legislation. But there was really three big ones that came out that will impact us, you know, basically starting this year, at least the first two will basically start impacting us this year. So the first one is the extension of IDEA eligibility, that's special education eligibility. So for years, special education eligibility students receive special education services. You receive them until you graduated and got your high school diploma or until you turned, or until your graduation year when you turn 21. And if you remember, it was about two years ago, Jen, two years ago, it changed to your 22nd birthday. So now, you know, when you, on your 22nd birthday, or when you got your diploma, you would be, you would age out of special education services. They changed it this year to now it's the end of the school year the year you turn 22, or if you get your high school diploma. So, you know, it does mean something for us. We do have very few students, but we do have a few students that fall into this group that would have aged out before the end of the school year that now we have to contact the parents, make sure they're aware of their eligibility. We have to reconvene a PPT, revise the IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, to reflect some of those changes. So like I said, there's not a lot of students in this, but there are some. And this goes into effect for this, you know, this school year right now. The one bright spot in all this is if it does run into excess cost reimbursement, we will be able to charge off the excess cost reimbursement. But we didn't budget for some, you know, for some of this stuff.
So we, so I remember when it was 21, then it was 22. It was going, it was for two years. It was like their 22nd birthday, but now it's till like, say, December 31st of the year.
Now it's till June, no, now it's till June 30th. At the end of the school year, you turn 22. So if you turn 22, anytime after July 1st, you're on all the way through June 30th.
So if you turn, if you turn 22 in September, and we will educate those students until June of that school.
Till the last day of school.
Okay.
That's how the new law is.
So we could potentially add a year?
Yes.
Well, weird the way that's written. Or until they have a high school diploma.
Well, also, just as an aside, so when students, every year we go to PPT with students, right, and we decide whether or not they need another year of services. So whether they're 18, whether they're 19, whether they're 20, we decide on that every year as PPTT. So the maximum they could get was 22. And then from there, now it's, it's the end of their 22nd birthday year. So the high school diploma, back to your question, sorry. So the high school diploma that, that all just depend, it all depends on what they need moving forward. So a lot of times, the reason why we have students beyond their 18th year, they've already met all their graduation requirements academically. But for transition purposes, life skills, things like that, we need to keep them on longer, which is why we have our community-based program and those types of things. So it's not always like academics per se. It's more so your life skills programming and things like that.
But if you turn 22 January, February, March, April, but then it's, and it's June 30th?
June 30th.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, this one to affect is July 1.
So we could have budgeted for a kid when he's turning 22 November 15th. And that's, you know, what could have happened.
Right.
But now, we're responsible for them until the end of the school year.
Until the June of, yeah, okay.
Do we have a estimated, like, how much is it gonna cost us for this year, approximately?
A little bit less than $100,000.
But not budgeted.
Not budgeted.
Correct.
Right.
Just under $100,000.
And there's no age, once they get their diploma, right? Whether that's at 18, 19, 20, 21. Once they get their diploma, then that's it.
Then they're graduating, yeah. So that's one, the other one is...
Stay with that one, sorry, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dennis.
So do we, how do we create a contingency fund?
True.
Do we know the...
True, we do have it, yeah.
You probably don't know this, but to that question, do you not have an idea of the offset from excess costs? Or that the $100,000 is with the possible offset of excess costs? You probably wouldn't know yet.
No, I mean, honestly, I don't really think that the students that I know are even hitting.
Yeah, it's not great, yeah. That's what I figured.
But Dennis, yours is a good comment. We don't have a contingency fund, but the Board of Finance has the contingency fund. If we ran into trouble, we could...
Thank you.
The next one is the personal finance. We've talked about this, we've talked about this one before. I know the Rotary Club started doing Reality Check to help out with this, which was a good thing. But, and, you know, I think we're gonna be in a pretty decent spot when this all kind of rolls out. But it requires all of our students to graduate high school to complete a course in personal finance. It doesn't have to be a whole, full-year class. It could be a half-credit class. So it could be a semester-long class. The tricky thing is, it starts with the class of 2027. That's this incoming freshman class. So, you know, it'd be nice if you gave us a year so we could prepare for it and have, you know, programming in place for, you know, maybe we wanted to offer it for some of these incoming freshmen. I am, I am sure that the students that have taken our current personal finance one-credit course, that will more than satisfy the requirement. But it's, there's gonna be a little bit of an impact. There's gonna be a curricular, you know, we're gonna have to make some curricular changes. I think we're gonna have to look at that one-credit class and call out what's important. What are we gonna put in this half-credit class? And all the kids are gonna have to, you know, meet this financial literacy curriculum. You know, it is one of our most popular electives right now. It's why we added a business teacher at Masek. So hopefully by adding that business teacher, that'll help us be able to address this. But it is something that they, they put in this year.
Joe, it was already part of the plan to create a half-credit version of the personal finance. The new teacher was allowing us to do that anyway, and then we stayed here.
I think it's a good idea.
But the focus, I'm sorry. The focus remains the same, that the seniors will have the first dibs? I mean, you play that way.
Well, by adding another teacher that teaches predominantly personal finance, you know, instead of leaving 130 to 140 requests on the table,
Yep.
we're satisfying, you know, most of those. So adding the teacher and opening that number of sessions of the class.
Should be the need, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna be able to manage it. But also, offering a half-year option as well will help us, you know, kind of tackle this as well, so.
And to your point about priorities given to seniors in our schedule and program?
Yeah. Having more sections, it allows us... There's freshmen taking personal finance, even this year, actually, some freshmen were walking in.
I know it was a saturated class, so.
Yeah.
This is really interesting. If I read correctly, Connecticut had the latest cutoff in the nation at January 1st for kindergarten eligibility. You know, it was January 1st. You had to be five before January 1st. I know my, my wife's family lives up in Massachusetts and they have a September 1st cutoff. So this is changing kindergarten eligibility. So you need to be five by September 1st to enter kindergarten. This one begins next year. So this isn't one that we have to worry about right now. There is a provision in the statute that allows parents to appeal directly to the principal if they want to get their, if they want their child to start early. Maybe you have a September 10th child or September 15th, or your child's, you know, reading at a pretty high level and there's, you know, four and, you know, 10 or 11 months. One of the things I want to do is talk to sort of like superintendent friends and our rest and see if we can try to make something. It'd be great if everyone's not doing something, every district is not doing something different to figure out who's gonna, who's gonna come in, who's not. It wasn't as much of an issue with the, with the old cutoff because January 1 was so late anyway. We always said, you know, if you're a four after January 1, you definitely couldn't start. But this might be a little bit trickier for us. You know, one bright spot with this one is, so you think about it next year, we're only gonna capture like nine months, you know, technically nine months worth of kids, not a full year. So hopefully it does provide a little relief for us in kindergarten next year, which is where we got hammered at Stepney and Fawn Hollow this year. On the flip side of that, some kids that would have aged out of preschool will probably stay in preschool. But that's a smaller number compared to the kindergarten. But six of one, a half dozen of the other. I think fewer kids in kindergarten will probably, I think will feel that more than the preschool. But we'll wait and see about that.
So how are we getting that word out?
I'm sorry, guys?
How are we getting that word out? Because most people aren't in the school system yet, right? So they're...
Yeah, it's amazing, the word's out because our parents are emailing already for next year.
It's been on the news.
Yeah, it's been all over. But it will definitely, when we start to... That usually, that process starts in December, January. We start, we, we send something out to all, in addition to our preschool, all the daycares, preschools. We put something in the Monroe Sun, the Connecticut Post, and we'll make sure that that's clear.
Oops.
So, yeah, those were some new ones. I will, I will give you more updates as we get some more clarity on some of the bills. I know there was a really large omnibus bill that, you know, contained a lot of stuff. That was a bill last year that contained the, the reading legislation and whatnot, which they told us we would know about our reading waiver by June. I guess they meant June 2024. We don't know yet, so we'll see. I put a, I put a little sheet on everyone's spot here just to kind of highlight some of the work. I really gotta give Dan and Ron a lot of credit for, you know, working really hard to address a lot of areas around the district. So these are just some of our summer facilities projects that are going on, so you see it at each of the schools. The first two pieces, you'll see there, the pool filter and the septic pipe at Masek. Those were both items that were on the capital plan that we were able to pick off this year and take off the, take off the capital plan. So that's good. And I won't go through and read every, every single thing. You can kind of go through. There's a couple of big ones, you know, to highlight. I know Julia and especially her staff will be really happy. Putting 18 window units on the remaining classrooms at Jackie Hollow on the second and third floor. We know we've talked about that a lot. The heat at Jackie Hollow is, is, is pretty, pretty tough. So all of those classrooms will have window units in them. Some air handling units at Fawn Hollow.
Joe, sorry.
Yep, yep.
Is there any possible way to add to that AC, the filming of those windows on the third floor?
I'll talk to Dan about it.
That'll cool it down, too.
Yeah, the third floor that faces west is filmed.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, but if you're looking to extend that to the second floor, that would be an addition.
I'll talk to Dan. Some other, you know, bigger projects that are going around. We had some rooftop units at Fawn Hollow that needed to be replaced. Stepney, we added basically what's the equivalent to your domestic hot water heater there. Instead of running the boilers all summer to generate what little amount of hot water we use in the summer, we have a separate high-efficiency hot water system now for doing that. You'll see on here, there's a couple of pieces where we had a new walk-in refrigerator and freezer, painting of some kitchens. And you'll see it says funded through the NSLP. That's the National School Lunch Program. So we have, we ended up with a pretty healthy balance in the National School Lunch Program at the three elementary schools in Jackie Hollow. And a lot of that was generated by the free lunches last year and the reimbursement that we got from the state from that. So, you know, we tried to pick off some of those, some of those projects. Monroe Elementary, if you drive by there, I know the company was there today. I think they were kind of marking it out. But along the fence line, they're gonna be, we're gonna be adding parking there. If you ever drive by there during the day, there's always cars parked on the grass on either side. So they're gonna add some curbing and some parking along that little field line.
Like if you're facing Monroe to the left?
To the left, yeah. Yeah, when you come in that driveway there, so.
Where they wanted to put the...
Yeah.
The easement, yeah.
So the easement's gone and... History.
The easement is with the town.
It's the building department, right.
Well, if we're paving it and painting it, it's pretty much history.
Well, we're painting the side where the field is.
Oh, not the other side.
So maybe at some point, we might have to do that. That's why I was hesitant with that because I think at some point, that might need to be done as well. But for right now, we're just on the side adjacent to the field.
Okay. What, Joe?
Yep.
Wasn't there a space issue with the new walk-in freezer, refrigerator in Stepney? I think when we did the walkthrough, there was an issue with having to replace it, absolutely, but there, I thought there was, the new ones were bigger than what we had? I don't know, we had an issue putting it in?
I could check with Dan, but I don't, I don't recall, Dennis. Do you remember that? I don't recall that.
No, okay.
And then we have some LED projects, which is nice. It's actually through a program at the state that we're upgrading all of the lights in our gyms with the exception of Monroe Elementary. And it's because of the wiring at Monroe Elementary, we couldn't do it there. But it's nice, we're getting all the LED lighting at like 30% cost. The state's picking up 70% of the cost. So that's just, I just wanted to keep people apprised of, you know, some of the, I mean, there's obviously the day-to-day, you know, stripping, waxing, floors, cleaning out the rooms, resetting the rooms, deck up, all going on. In addition to all that, these guys are hopping.
Sidebar with that, the LED lighting?
Hold on one second, Jerry had his hand up.
Oh, sorry. Joe, thanks to PTO, the awning. Is that gonna be on the cafeteria side?
That is, I believe the awnings were on the, in the back cafeteria side.
Gotcha.
Because that's where, that's where the kids come in in the morning and in the, as you walk into the preschool as well.
And the PTO funded it, how much?
They partially through them and partially through us, yeah.
Dennis, come on.
Yeah, with the lighting, it's kind of sidebar. When we have elections, right, those lights automatically go off. There's gotta be a way of keeping them on, even though they're LED, because people want to see what they're voting for.
Yeah.
If there are way to look at that when they're doing it.
And that was part of the problem with, why they didn't put it in, because they automatically go off. But I'll, I'll talk to Dan and Al.
Okay, thanks.
Joe, the sidewalks at Stepney, can you just, like, what? Explain like what was done?
Yeah, so, you see the sidewalks at Stepney here?
Or the last sidewalk?
The expanded sidewalk, all right, so a couple of things there with the, with the paving. Number one, when you drop your kids off, there's only like a little bit of sidewalk and...
By the gym?
By the gym. So some cars pull up, but now you're on the grass. So you only can let out like, you know, one or two cars at a time. This is to expand that, to give it more sidewalk. So people will pull all the way up, let their kids out so we can get, you know, maybe four or five cars at a time. In addition to that, around the, around the perimeter of Stepney, around the sides and in the back, is sidewalks. Like all of those rooms at Stepney have exterior doors and they go out, and there's walkways that go all the way around the building. And those, those walkways are in horrible, horrible shape. They're heaving and cracking and all of that. So this, I think last year, they fixed along like the kindergarten side and some stuff along the front. This year, they're gonna go along the 4th and 5th grade section. And then next year, to finish, to finish it off, go across the back of the school.
I have just a curious question, like, is it heating and cracking because of water drainage issues? Like...
I, I think, Shannon, I just think it's really, really old. Yeah, I think it's the same sidewalk that was there when I was there.
So it's really old?
Yeah. It's like 21 years old.
Wow, wow.
I'm as old as you, so when I say that, I say it in jest.
Yeah.
When Mason had went to the old schoolhouse for a field trip when he was little, he said, "Was that your school? Is that where you lived and you were growing?" And he was serious.
Any other questions on, maybe, yeah, Jeff?
Just for one, I mean, is there any of the, like, the press box and the football scoreboard?
No, we had kind of put a hold on it at the end of, like, just because the timing was horrible. But I think we, we said was, and we talked to them, "Let's get on this right now, you know, as soon as the fall kind of starts" because it's gonna be a short window to get it in. So if we're gonna try to get it in for next year, we're gonna have to go like, you know, have everything ready. So as soon as graduation's over.
There were some delays with EverSource, too.
Yeah.
Dan was waiting for them to find out what, how much they were gonna run from the back up the, up the baseball field and all that, too. So he hadn't heard back from them.
But it's happening this school year?
Excuse me?
But it is happening like for this school year or not?
It's in, yeah.
Yeah, if we, for this school year, probably not. It won't be in.
It won't be.
After graduation.
No, after, after graduation.
So it'll be like this time next summer?
Yeah.
Next summer installation.
Yes.
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
Go ahead, Joe.
Anything else? All right, I'll kick it over to Ron then for, let me just do the bottom, the last thing, it's just, every year, the Caves Caps, the Cave Caps Convention takes place, and I let folks know when it's gonna be, but they never give the agenda of what's gonna happen. This year, they, I think they got a lot of feedback.
They sent an email, yeah.
So they, so now it's there, if you wanna look at the link, if anyone's interested, I mean, we have some time, it's obviously not until November 17th or 18th, but it's nice, 'cause now you can look at it and see, like, oh, that might be interesting, I might wanna go to it. Before, it was kind of you're signing up and hoping something, you know, you know, piques your interest, so that's there for everybody, and like I said, I'll turn it over to Ron now for the, the fund activity statements and the budget transfers.
So included in your packs are two fund activity statements, one for May, one for June, the May one was not handed out last month. If, what I wanted to do was jump to one of the handouts I gave you, which is a more up-to-date budget report as of today, unless anyone has any specific questions on the fund activity statements, I was just...
Couldn't help it.
Okay, so, handout number one is, and I highlighted, you know, the report was generated today, and it's, you go to, if you look at page three, right now, at the bottom, our surplus is right at 575. It does look like we're gonna be closing some, you know, of the 845,000 in purchase orders, some of those will be getting closed and liquidated, so I do expect that number to go up from there. One thing specific I wanted to point out in the middle of page two, in the encumbrance column, you'll see encumbrances in the building repair and maintenance line of $501,000, and a good chunk of that relates to the list that Joe just went over. And what I'll be asking, you know, kind of to, you know, tying in with this, the report you get on a monthly basis is broken down by object code, and the budget transfer that is being presented to you guys tonight is to everything in the available budget column, it's to get rid of the, basically, the negative balances by transferring available funds from the positive balance object code, and that...
That, being said, Ron, do we need to adjust next year's budget, because you have 126% over or whatever, I mean, you're making the adjustments financially, but do we have to...
So, when, when we build next year's budget, we'll build it based on the staff in place at the time, you know, it's, we build it from the zero, zero, so it's, I mean, we'll certainly take a look at some line items and see where the actuals are falling, and if we need to adjust from there, we will. The...
And we know heat and energy is just going crazy, so...
Yeah. The other thing, at the very bottom of page one, you'll see medical and drug insurance was the big driver of, you know, that was the, the biggest surplus item, which again, when, when you budget that, you're, you're budgeting it, budgeting it before open enrollment.
Right.
So you do build a, a little bit of a contingency in, and then, you know, with, with staff movement, retirements and adds, it, you know, how it shakes out is anyone guesses, anyone's guess eight months before the beginning of the fiscal year, so...
Right, so you're hoping to build a contingency.
Yeah.
Right.
So, and that's not uncommon, even on the town side, to have, you know, the numbers bigger here, but the, you know, the employee, you know, there's more employees also, so...
Ron, can I interject for a second?
Absolutely.
So if the board remembers, for this year's budget that we're in right now, we were looking at a, about minus $40,000, and we spoke to the Board of Finance about this, and that, that 501,000 that you see there for all the building stuff is, we discussed these projects with them, and, you know, with the expected surplus, if we pulled projects out of what's now this year, and we, we got them done with last year's surplus, we eliminated any, any kind of, you know, deficit in, in the budget, and we were able to pick off a significant amount of projects, as you saw, to get ahead of, of, you know, having to watch our budgets in the years past, where maintenance always got cut, so we've been doing a good job catching up and getting back to where we need to be. So, that was the discussion with the Board of Finance, and I'm glad that we had the, the surplus, and Dan did a lot of, a lot of good work, but that's what kind of transpired, so that we were able to fix this year's budget and get a lot done. Are we still turning some back to the town, or it still has to pull through?
So, so right now, yeah, so the, right now, the 575 surplus, which, as purchase orders close, you know, that number's gonna fall, I feel, between six and seven, that, that's what'll be going back to the town.
Okay. About 1%.
It's as of July 31st?
June 30th.
I mean, June 30th, I'm sorry, June 30th.
So six to 700, potentially? Thanks, Ron.
What about the space plan?
That's a conversation we're having, we have Board of Finance this week, talked to them about putting some of that money aside, yeah, the facility study.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Or, and/or, being able to jump ahead on some of these capital projects.
Right, right. Well, it's nice to see that there are efficiencies in these projects that you picked, so we're gonna get some energy efficiencies where we know that's already an expense that's going away, so...
Right, right, right. We had discussed asking the Board of Finance to take some of that surplus money, so that we can get a jump on the facility study, so we can get a jump on the press box, so that, you know, we could encumber that.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ron, go ahead.
So that, that's actually pretty much it, I mean, as, as far as the, and I know you just, the second handout was the budget transfer itself, that I'll be asking, that we'll be asking you to go down later, that just kind of, you know, if you look at, again, if you look at the available budget, the negative amounts need to get brought up to at least zero, right? And that's what the budget transfer does. I'll point out a couple things, you guys have...
Yeah, yes, it is.
Okay, on page, on page 11, let me point out a couple large items in the budget transfer. To your point, what you were just speaking of, Dave, freeing up some budget funds for next year, we prepaid some of the retirements, so if you look 80% down the page, you'll see a...
202.
202. So, that's prepaying as of June 30th, instead of July 1st, some of the retirement payments. So it doesn't impact the retirees, and that's what we negotiated into the teacher's contract. So to your point, there's a lot of moving parts with next year, but we did what we could to hopefully get off to a good start also.
We could even talk to the Board of Finance about $100,000 from this surplus, too, for, so get, Dennis, to your point, put some of that aside.
Cause that is about a thousand dollars.
Makes sense, even up, you know.
Extra though.
Leave the, leave the current fund alone.
It's their 22-year-old.
It's worth the conversation, right?
Yeah.
Definitely, definitely.
I mean, the good thing was, is we obviously didn't have to touch that fund this year.
Yeah, no, we, yeah.
That's true.
Again, if you move on to page 12 on the budget transfer, you'll see, again, some, you see some big, big movement going back and forth, the, about a third of the way down the page, building repairs, that's, again, that's an add to, to the maintenance budget to cover a lot of the projects around the district. In the middle there, you see some contingency, transportation consent, contingency, offsetting special ed and regular transportation. A lot of that contingency was built in last year, because the transportation contract was not finalized at that time. And then again, you know, down at the bottom, you see public and private tuition for special ed, you know, one was over budget, the other was under budget, and there's a little bit of an offset there.
Dave?
So this is the list that we're gonna be voting on under New Business?
Correct.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Page 12, number two, second item?
Ask, ask Ron.
What's that? No, it's a question for you.
Page 12, the second line, the 51571, which one?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're moving things around, right, to handle any, any kind of...
Okay, thanks.
No?
Makes sense.
Good job.
Yeah.
Okay, we have no unfinished business, so I'd like to move to New Business, which is the approval of the budget transfers that we just spoke about and grilled Ron relentlessly on. So can I have a motion to accept the year-end budget transfers as presented at tonight's meeting? Shannon, seconded by Chrissy, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Mr. Stevens, you have anything to say tonight?
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn until September.
Motion to adjourn until September, can I have a second on that?
Okay.
I can't second it, too.